This is the Energy and Environment Committee. You ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the Energy and Environment Special Meeting Wednesday, October 21st. We are in room 1060, City Hall. It's 2:30 PM and Mr. Coretts is present. Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts, for being here on time. I'm going to start with item number two first. And I would like, and I appreciate very much that you're here, Mr. Freeman, and I know you're in a very difficult position, but I felt we needed to discuss this. And I want to put this question to you, and then I'll, we'll talk a little bit, and then we'll get the cards after we're done talking. Um, you know, we have a copy of a contract here. And the contract is for Mr. Nahai, and it's for $82,000. And that goes through the end of the year, through 12/31/09. And you are now on salary over at the Department of Water and Power as the interim general manager. So what I need for you to explain to me is, what services is Mr. Nahai going to provide during this period that the general manager, yourself, or the assistant GM, which I believe is Mr. Raj, I think he just came in, cannot provide? So I need some explanation as to why we are paying three highly skilled people for the same time period. And I don't, I don't like that. I wouldn't vote for it. If legally I can send it back to your commission to get you to redo it, I will. And I don't understand the logic in this. So can you explain to me why this occurred this way? And if there's some way that you can, let's put this in context. You and I have had a couple of conversations in the last couple of weeks about the ECAF and about the need for more rate adjustment, about public infrastructure repair. And I know specifically, we've had a conversation on the record about dialing back, the department dialing back on its O&M costs, operations and maintenance, and its operational costs, and particularly salaries. So, you know, this couldn't have come at probably a more awkward time. Particularly, you also have another issue coming up, which is not on the agenda, so we won't discuss that today. But how are we going to correct this? Because this is just, it's embarrassing, it's illogical, it's stupid, and I don't know who came up with this idea, but whoever they did, whoever did, you need to go back and talk to them again. And you either need to come up with a program where David is going to continue to work for the department through the end of the year beyond being on call, because for $82,000, that's a nice piece of change. So I think he needs to produce a work product. Or you can stay on staff at the mayor's office and get your mayor, deputy mayor's salary, and let him continue to work through the end of the year, and maybe give two weeks' notice instead of this much notice, and he's given, you know, and we can look for a new GM. So with all that, what do you have to say? What can you tell me? Help me make sense out of this, because I can't.
I think if you were in my shoes, you would want to have the former general manager at your beck and call, and I-
Well, I wouldn't do it for $82,000 now. Come on, be serious, serious now. Now, just to give you an example, you can give him an assignment and have him work on it through the end of the year, so that you have some work product coming from him, as opposed to just letting him be on call. I mean, he's a wonderful person. I'm sure he would have been on call for you for free. So, you know, he's well-connected in the environmental community, highly regarded. You don't, there's no reason that we have to pay him $82,000 a year. He gave notice, and I appreciate that he was gracious enough to give us a really good length of time. But I think it's incumbent, particularly when we talk about reducing O&M, you're asking for an ECAF, you got this other issue on the horizon, now you're over there, and not that you don't deserve to be paid what you're paid, because you at least ran a utility. You have the background, you had the qualifications. So to put you, pop you in over there as an interim general manager, that made a lot of sense. But what doesn't make sense to me, we've got you, you've got Ramon, and now we've got Mr. Nahai. He's got three really incredible people, all drawing a very high-level salary. So what can we do to get our, get our money's worth, and David perhaps can do some work for us for this amount of money, $82,000, through the end of the year? What do you think?
I think that I have just about all that I know on the subject to say, is that I support this contract, and I am glad to have him at my beck and call, and I will use him to the extent that he can be helpful to me. For example, there was a letter that came in yesterday from one of the people that want to build a power plant from us, and talked about, they had a meeting with Mr. Nahai, and blah, 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 blah. Well, it was very useful for me to be able to call him up and ask him, you know, what did you really say to these people? And did you say what they're saying? And so that comes up again and again.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't, if you've said all you need to say, what I want to do, and I'll get it done by Friday, is I'll help you develop a program so that we can have David do some work on a daily basis, whether that's through telecommuting with some time sheets, so that we can document on an hour. We'll take this $82,000 and divide it up by, say, 40 hours a week, although I'm sure he worked more than 40 hours a week, but, you know, just as a starting point. And then figure out, I'll ask the CLA to help me develop the motion, to figure out how we can, what do you call it, accrual, where he bills back the time then, and then he demonstrates that he did the work, and then he can bill the city for it. So then we can consider this $82,000 encumbered, and then he can basically earn as you go. Okay? So we'll do that. I mean, if you don't have anything else to add, that's, that's what I can do. I'm trying to get you to give me some information here. Like I said, you're skilled, Ramon is skilled, highly skilled, experienced with utilities. You two, you and Mr. Raj, you're at the top of the game here.
I'm focused what I, on what I promised you to do, which is to go over that budget over there like it's never been gone over before, and that's what I'm focusing on.
Okay, well, I'm thinking you missed something here. And I'm not trying to be funny and, or anything like that, but this, I got to tell you, Mr. Freeman, this is ridiculous. Okay? So with that, if you don't want to add anything else, and if I were you, you're the one who's in the hot seat, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold back. If you had an idea, I would offer it to me, because this is embarrassing, and my reputation is on the line here, too, as the chair of the Energy and Environment Committee. I have to be diligent, and I have to do the due diligence, and I have to be responsible. And, you know, we're, we're in the process of commencing a conversation about ratepayer advocate or an inspector general, and I know you said a couple of weeks ago, you are the ratepayers advocate. Now, how can I help you make that argument? And I, and I'm not doing, and you know me, I don't need to showboat, you know, other people like it, but I don't. I don't, you know, other people like to do that, but I don't, you know, because, you know, I have work to do, but-
That was my line, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
What's she talking about?
I don't know. But you're not, what can I tell you? You're not helping me out here. So I'm going to do that. This is what I'm going to do. Let me spell it out, and, you know, we don't have to go all afternoon about this. I will ask the chief legislative analyst to prepare a motion for me to introduce on Friday. We will determine the per-hour value of this contract, and then I will take it to council. And what I will ask to be done is to ask Mr. Nahai to bill his time on an hourly basis back to the Department of Water and Power, and I'll ask him to make it specific enough so we have detail in the time sheets. Because I think we have to detail to the ratepayers what the $82,000 was spent on and what work was done. So, you know, and he's a lawyer, so he will know how to do this. I would suspect he wouldn't even have a problem with it. You know, he knows how to bill already. And that's, that's what I'm going to do, and so that it's, I don't know the proper accounting term, but it's, is it accrual?
We could use accrual.
Accrual accounting, accrual accounting, where he doesn't get paid unless he bills the time. And then that way, we can deal with it that way, and then you and I don't have to be here for the next three hours discussing how this happened, because quite frankly, I don't even know that I care how it happened. The fact of it is, it's a stupid thing to have happened. It didn't need to happen. And you can go on and do your job, and then we'll set up a system where he can do, he can bill the department for work that he's actually done, and, you know, we'll get through the end of the year. And then, who knows? Maybe we'll have some money left over at the end of this contract, and then, you know, you can reduce, 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 as we go into the O&M discussion. So now, for my best friend from the San Fernando Valley, Mr. Showboat himself, and the conservative-to-moderate voice on the council, depending on what day it is, Mr.
I love these accolades. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, yes, yes.
Member-
Perry.
Pro-Tam, Jen Perry. Your comments are on target, illogical, embarrassing, not only to you, but to me and the ratepayers of the city of Los Angeles. I prepared a motion, and I am pleased that we are hearing this today.
Is he going to say that I can do it?
And the motion asks that the general manager of the Department of Water and Power and the president of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners report immediately to the city council with an explanation of the decision to enter into a consulting contract with Mr. David Nahai, and should this agreement go into effect, a justification of the procedures that was used to approve such an agreement without a formal vote of the board. And I think it was done in a rather underhanded fashion, since there was no vote of the board of commissioners of water and power. And if it was, then we could have 245'd it. And I prepared a letter for you and other members of the committee, and I'll read that briefly. Today, you will consider a motion I introduced earlier this month regarding a consulting agreement worth up to $82,000 between the Department of Water and Power and its former general manager, David Nahai. I thank you for taking this matter expeditiously. I also want to urge you to scrutinize this contract as closely as possible, and you've also made statements that you're going to do that. As a municipally-owned utility, the Department of Water and Power ultimately belongs to the ratepayers of Los Angeles at all times, but especially difficult economic times such as we're facing. We must keep those ratepayers in mind when we spend public dollars. Paying consulting money to a former general manager while also paying a full salary to his replacement is essentially double-billing the ratepayers, and it is wrong. This contract with Mr. Nahai should be nullified by whatever means we, as council members, have within our authority, and I look forward to continued investigation of this matter in your committee, here in today, and in the future, and ultimately in the city council. My goal is the same as your goal, Madam Chair, that the ratepayers of the city of Los Angeles are all pressed for the dollars to pay their house payments, to pay for food, to take care of their families, and with this slap in the face of the ratepayers, this $82,000 consulting contract, which is really open-ended, it's an embarrassment to the people who pay the bills. And Mr. Freeman has been the former general manager, he's the current general manager, he's a former commissioner, and I think he dates back to the Tennessee Valley Authority, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. David Freeman knows the Department of Water and Power inside and out, and I question along with you and other members of the city of Los Angeles, why a consulting contract to this extent would be necessary with all the knowledge and the expertise that's brought to the table by Mr. Freeman as the current interim general manager. So I've made my statement, and I think I'm not only speaking for me, but for the people who get their water and power bill and throw their hands up and says, is anyone watching for us? I will guarantee that you are watching over them. I am watching, along with members of this committee, including Mr. Coretts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts, did you, would you like to ask any-
Yeah, the one thing I'd add is, we're acting like this is a unique situation. I don't think it actually is, although I wasn't around previously, but I believe when general managers have left under similar circumstances, they've often had this kind of a deal. So rather than being a unique problem, it's sort of a business-as-usual that we should address going forward, rather than just in this situation.
I agree.
So we may want to look at whether we can come up with a language for a motion dealing with other GMs, either in discretionary departments or in our own generally-funded departments, and making it clear that this kind of arrangement is not acceptable going forward.
Well, in the past, there was a general manager who was terminated, and we required that he work and produce work product. This is where I draw my precedent from. This is not an idea that came to me today. You're right, there has been, this has occurred in the past, but in that particular case, it's the most recent case that I can remember, he was required to produce work and to bill for it and to document it.
So I think we should set up a general rule, rather than, as in that case-
Yeah, we'll put it in a motion.
And as in this one, where we've looked at it after the fact and said, this is not the way the city should operate.
Well, it was after the fact, because we, the council, did not know about it until it had already occurred.
Right, but what I'm suggesting is we anticipate that for the future-
We anticipate that this may occur in the future.
And direct that it not happen this way.
That it not happen again, absolutely, and I-
And if you'd like to join me in writing such a motion, we can do that.
We'll ask the CLA to put a motion together for us.
That would be great.
And, because I always put my motions through the CLA's office for form and substance. Okay, did you have any other questions?
No, that was just my suggestion.
Mr. City Attorney, if I might ask you a question on the record. I don't quite understand the process of what took place here. Did it, did this go through commission for approval, the DWP commission?
Dean O'Connell, Deputy City Attorney, it did not have to go through the commission. Under Charter Section 509 regarding the general manager's authority, and more specifically 604, which states that a board may authorize the general manager to contract on its behalf up to a monetary ceiling, and-
Do you know what the ceiling is?
Pursuant to Administrative Code 10.1.1, the general manager of the proprietary departments have the power to contract on behalf of the board up to $150,000.
Okay.
And furthermore, there's a Board of Water and Power Commissioners Resolution 000271 dated May 16, 2000, which underscores Admin Code 10.1.1, in essence stating that the authority of the general manager to contract on behalf of the department is up to $150,000.
Okay, so because of the ceiling, because of the authority through the general manager, does that mean that as a council person, I cannot exercise the option to prop 245 or to bring this to review, for review by the council, and then send it back? Is that correct?
That's correct, because the board did not take an action, of which council could take jurisdiction.
Okay, take jurisdiction. All right, so then, if, is my best option then to go ahead and do the motion that I have shared with Mr. Freeman, I intend to do, which is to ask Mr. Nahai to bill us on an hourly basis for an amount not to exceed the contractual amount, as referenced in the contract with documentation, and all the specific detail there, too?
As long as it's understood, that is, that is a form of request, not an instruction to the proprietary department.
All right, and is that because I was not a party to the contract? That I can't make it a requirement, or?
No, it's more of a, regarding the proprietary departments have control of their own funds, and they're able to-
Okay, okay, so it's a function of the charter and the way the department is configured?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. All right, well, so, Mr. CLA, if you would work with my office on drafting that, and also, Mr. Coretts, if you're interested, we could incorporate the two ideas into one motion, if you'd like, or separately?
That would be fine.
Okay, great. So if you would work to get this introduced this coming Friday, because I think we need to act with great deliberation, and I would like to make that so. All right, so, oh, we have some cards on this item. Mr. Humphreaville, Ms. Garcia, and Dr. Williams. Why don't you, can you pull up one more chair for, and they can all come up at the same time?
I'll let's hold that.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Garcia.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you are being extremely generous, extremely generous on ratepayers' money. I understand the situation, but however, I almost would consider this like double-dipping, because he is receiving a, he will be receiving a generous salary from his new position. I don't see that in the past, this, in the past 12 general managers that we have had, that any of them have had this, this generous offer. This is, I have seen it in the private sector, but this is a municipal utility, and these are ratepayers' money, and that it should be happening is absolutely unheard of, as far as I'm concerned. And we, not only was the council not notified, the, all the committees were not notified, the commission was not notified, the ratepayers, the neighborhood councils, the community was not notified, or included as part of it. I think it is insulting, it should be insulting for you and for, certainly for us. I would not recommend it at all, and I think you are being very generous with, with the, with our money. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr., where did Dr. Williams go? Okay, Dr. Humphreaville, why don't you go next? And then, Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams, you go last.
Given that David was forced out of his position as the general manager of the Department of Water and Power, I think some of the people at City Hall felt that this was a reasonable payment. After all, he did give up a lucrative law practice, take a big, huge salary cut. He spent two years previously on the Board of Commissioners at no compensation. What I really think this does, though, is reflects upon, reflects very poorly upon the whole process of how they handle executives and, you know, high-end payments over the Department of Water and Power. You know, for example, we had requests for pension makeups back a couple of years ago with, with Mr. Raj. We also have coming up right now Wally Knox, who's going to come in at some huge compensation, and he's nothing but overhead. How is he, how is he fitting into the equation when he wasn't good enough to fit into the port, when the council, in an unanimous decision, dinged him down there? I think this reflects very poorly, this, this is just another instance of, that reflects poorly on the DWP, as well as the city council and the city in general, as to what the hell is going on over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Williams?
Basically similar comments. It's only $1,000 a day. Depends on what he does for it. So, that's, for a consultant, that's not bad. If he was in IT, it'd probably be even more. However, what has he done in the past? What are his qualifications? He ain't worth it. And based upon what I've seen directly with him, and the way that the DWP has been organized for transparency, timeliness, in fact, their own attorney stated that the MOU with the neighborhood councils is defined by DWP, and timely means DWP timely. So if we give you three days' notice, that's okay, and we expect neighborhood councils to be informed with three days' notice. So I'd say, I think $1,000 a day is probably in far excess of his value. You can try to control him all you want, but I doubt if he will even stoop to filling in a time sheet. So it may be a moot question, because I don't think he'll go along with it. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So again, you've got the language for what I'd like to see in the motion to be introduced Friday, and Mr. Coretts, if you want to restate what it is you'd like for it to say?
Well, essentially, that we, going forward, ban this kind of a settlement, so that we don't see what we've seen in the past with, with some of the general managers with large balloon contracts as they leave.
Limiting provision on severance packages.
Right.
Okay. Madam Chair, is there specific action you'd like to take with regard to this motion? Note, file, committee?
And I should, I should point out, by the way, it's not technically a severance package, because I think that's technically illegal to do, but-
Yeah, it is illegal.
But it's, it's a way to-
It's not permissible.
It's sort of an informal way to get around that.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, your question was, what's the action to be taken?
Yeah, would you like to take an action on this, for this particular motion? Note and file?
I guess, this, this motion today?
Yeah.
Yeah, this will have to be a note and file.
Okay.
So, and based on what our city attorney has told us today, the one to be filed, introduced on Friday, will be a request for the following process to be implemented-
Sure.
-by the Department of Water and Power. Okay, we're going to jump back to number one, and for purposes of time, I think we have somebody here from Personnel? Do we? Okay.
I'm prepared to speak to that issue.
Okay. Let's, let's have the personnel, people, two folks from Personnel just talk to us a little bit about, if you can, in a succinct manner, the selection process, the team, I guess, the members of the team, and how you want to go about soliciting community input, including but not limited to neighborhood councils. So talk, talk to us about that.
Okay, let me clarify, I'm representing the Department of Water and Power with Mr. Freeman.
Who's here from Personnel?
Raul Lemus, Personnel Department.
Okay, are you, are you, how are you representing them, other than the way that Mr. Freeman's representing?
I'm responsible for employee services, so if we engage in any recruitment processes, my group would be responsible for it, and usually with the executive recruits. I'm very involved in the executive recruits.
Okay.
And I've had discussions with President Alpert on this also.
Okay, so who's the best person to start? Would it be Personnel?
Perhaps, yeah. For me to start, just to explain that per Charter Section 604, the Board of Commissioners does make the appointment to general manager, subject to confirmation by the mayor and the council. Personnel Department is minimally involved. We're assisting at this point with establishing a contract with an executive recruiter, and we stand by to assist in any way the department sees for us to be involved.
So do you initiate the process, or does-
The department initiates.
Okay, so tell me what the process is, who's on the selection team, how you post it?
If I may answer, since I'm kind of responsible-
Okay.
I have taken advantage of the fact that the Personnel Department had skilled, shall we say, headhunters already retained for the city purpose. I've met with a headhunter, and a national search is underway. Now, we, we have to design, and I'm looking forward to this dialogue, frankly, to hear the views of you and the other, and Mr. Coretts, who made the motion. We're, we have a blank sheet of paper right now, but we are completely in agreement with you that this is a process that has to be at a critical stage, open for the community to have input. Perhaps the more important reason for that is that the candidates for general manager need to hear from the community people before they're selected and during the process, so they're inculcated with the concerns that the citizens of LA have, so that the person selected will understand that a big part of his or her job is to restore the kind of confidence that existed in the Department of Water and Power over the course of its history, which is, I'll admit, at a low ebb right now.
How long do you anticipate you'll be on a search? Do you have any sense of how long that may take?
Well, my direction from the mayor and everyone else is to get it done as promptly as possible, and I have a six-month deadline, in the sense that my interim appointment expires within six months. I hope to beat that, but these things do take a few months. We have Thanksgiving and Christmas, and so I-
Well, one suggestion I'd like to make, and it may aid in your search, is that this time around, we, we look very specifically for someone who has previous utility management experience. So, I, okay.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah, that's really important.
I think we have to have a pass-fail test before we consider a person.
Is that something that can be incorporated into the job description, or?
What I'd like to do is, unfortunately, I did not have a chance to speak to Mr. Freeman before I came to the meeting, because I just spoke with Mr. Alpert right, right before coming.
Right, right.
And Commissioner Alpert wanted me to assure this committee that, that he is highly supportive of an open process, that's going to be quite similar to what was done with Chief of Police. And Commissioner Alpert is, is recommending that to me, that a committee be formed, and a committee that would be formed with him as the chair, since he's the appointing authority for the, for the position. And involved in that committee would be Mr. Freeman, of course, another representative from the mayor's office. We'd have community involvement, we would have-
Well, why don't we just hold all that until we've had input from our council people here, and have a chance to think it through?
I mean, I've had, we've had a year to think it through, okay? Or like, two years. I'm suggesting very strongly that as part of the job description, that you include language that recognizes the importance of having previous utility management expertise, much like Mr. Freeman, when we hired him.
But you want someone younger.
No, that's fine. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but that's really important, okay? So I also want to put this on the record, because I know Mr. Coretts has a motion regarding the involvement of neighborhood councils, and I just would like to add language in it that says, including but not limited to neighborhood councils, because not every-
Of course.
-district has that system in place. I have lots and lots of- I have lots and lots of organizations, CPABs, CACs, PACs, all, you know, all the, those things, and they're going to be very, very interested too. Senior advocacy organizations, social service providers, who are kind of, you know, cleaning up the collateral damage for people's bills going up and not understanding what they're getting for it. So, um, this is what I would like to see as part of the selection process and the job description. And, you know, ultimately, we have the, and thank you for being open to that. As council members, we, this comes to us ultimately anyway. And I hope that you can take this back to your commissioners and that they will incorporate our suggestions. I don't think they're unreasonable, and convey that to them. Mr. Coretz, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
Yeah, I mean, this was envisioned similarly to the motion that I made relating to the police chief search, to make sure we, we lay out an element of community involvement and sort of commit to that upfront.
He has to meet me at the-
I think it's been done before in, in searches for police chiefs. I don't think it's ever been done in a, that I know of, in a search for a DWP department head. So it might be a first time for this approach. And the neighborhood councils are, are noted as sort of an umbrella group, but certainly everyone is, is intended to be involved in whatever meetings happen. And I think that's the process that, that essentially the, the, the search for the LEPD chief took. They had a certain number of community meetings, and, and that's what's intended here as well. Certainly, there's been a lot of community involvement and commentary on DWP rates and Prop B and all kinds of other DWP-related issues. So we just want to be sure there's a format for people to talk about what they think we should be looking for in a, in a DWP head. And also maybe even a candidate's night once or twice with community groups to meet maybe the top three finalists. You know, if we had one or two of those kinds of meetings in places in the city, I think that would, that would really be ideal to pull the community into it.
And if you need some precedent for that, I know the school district did that sort of approach, so there is some precedent for that in the, in a public forum. Take a look at that, too.
If I could just have a word, I want to echo Councilwoman Perry's point. Fundamentally here is finding a person with experience running electric utility. That's a pass/fail test, as far as I'm concerned, and I think we all feel that way. Once we have found a critical mass of people that passed the fundamental test, I think then the community comes in and, and kind of examines them and interacts with them. But there are groups, in addition to neighborhood councils, that have a life-or-death stake in this. I mean, our customers, our large industrial customers, our smaller customers.
I am not going to do it now.
And so we'll, we'll be thinking through how we can involve a variety, as Councilwoman Perry suggests. The neighborhood councils are one group, but there are a lot of other groups that have an interest in this and, and would have something to contribute. So this, 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 you're right, the DWP has never opened up on this before. We're going to be wide open.
Okay.
That's great. As far and wide as, as you'd like to cast the net, I think that's great to pull in participation.
Sounds good. Um, we have three cards, and as I call the three of you back up, why don't we put your public comment together with you coming up, so you don't have to come up yet again? And then I'll give you additional time. If I can have you each speak for a total of three minutes, that will include your comment on this item and your public comment, and then we'll adjourn. All right. So can you reset the clock for them? Okay, Soladad, Garcia, Jack Humphreville, and of course, Dr. Clyde Williams.
What's that?
We have three whole minutes.
Three whole minutes. And that'll encompass item one, plus your public comment, plus-
Madam Chair, is it three minutes per person or three minutes for the entire?
Three minutes per person.
And it includes public comment also?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's going to be difficult.
You don't have to use them all.
Well, a minute.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cut to the chase.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't need, we don't need a second.
All right, thank you. Again, thank you, Madam Chair, you're, you're great. And I would add to that, that yes, we do need someone who has the experience in utilities and has at least management, organization, and stability. And yes, there is an MOU, and that was a, you never had one before when, when you were in office, but it came about and it, there is definitely room there for the neighborhood councils to participate and be included, and we very much need that at this time. Then, this is a public comment. I would like you to know that as of November 1st, the baton of the MOU and the DWP Committee, Advocacy Committee, will be turned over to Tony Wilkinson as the MOU person, and for the DWP Advocacy Committee will be your friend, Jack Humphreville. And I would like to recommend to the, to the chair and to the council that they be included in committees having to do with DWP issues and not other people who are supposedly carrying the word for us.
Okay. Go ahead.
That was it.
That's fine. You sure? Go ahead. You want to talk some more?
You got a minute, you got a minute and a half left? Oh, my goodness.
Well, I, I don't want to take all your stuff. I'll wait till you say what you need, and I'll finish it up.
Well, we can't jump around like that. So take your 1:35 now.
(laughing).
Take your one, one minute and 35 seconds now.
Okay. I, I've enjoyed being on this committee and, being chair and president of both of these committees. Now you will have two people and, and several executive board members that will be just magnificent and wonderful. I, I'd like to thank you all and know that I, although I am, the baton is being put out, I will not be out of the picture. I will still be the emeritus, and I will still be the advisor, and I will be on call, both email and telephone, without pay. Without pay, and quite probably the contrary, I will be putting money out.
And help Mr. Freeman out.
(laugh) Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jack Humphreville.
Thank you very much for, thank you very much for thanking, for including or thinking of the neighborhood councils and the ratepayers in terms of the process of selecting a general manager. Hopefully, we can get a first-class general manager who not only has utility experience but also has the ability to relate to the neighborhood councils. I might also say that when looking for the DWP, DWP has a significantly larger budget than the police, just, just as a little curiosity. I would also say that I think the neighborhood councils and the, and the ratepayers should also have a say in who's nominated to the board, on the ratepayer's advocate, of course, and also on the solar plan. Speaking of the solar plan, which was going to be my general comments-
Okay.
-DWP has made a big deal about all sorts of outreach, outreach with regards to the solar plan. Quite frankly, it's a snow job. It's a con job. It's a bunch of baloney. And the reason for it is, is very simple. There's no facts, there's no figures. You know, they've been doing this for two or three years, and not to come up with any numbers at all, other than one, which I'll get to in a second, is, is an insult not only to the ratepayers but also to the city council, and that they could have the gall to come up here and say they've done outreach is just unbelievable. The only figure they used was a dollar, a dollar a month increase over alternate plans. To come up with that number means they've looked at alternate plans, they've looked at the solar plans, they looked at everything. So, you know, how do they come up with this number? It's disingenuous. The second part of the solar plan that's fixed, it fixed, is that, is the part that where they basically, the department goes out and rejects Measure B, rejects the voter's vote on Measure B. They are intending to give the DWP, the inexperienced DWP, I might add, with regards to solar power, an exclusive, no-bid, monopolistically priced, not fixed price, contract to build the 400 megawatts of in-solar, in-solar power. As the P, as the PA consulting people called, said, that's going to cost a billion to $2 billion more than what, you know, what you might get from private contractors who will be on fixed price, bonded, and using building trade, using the guys from the building trades. So for DWP to come up here and say that this solar plan, you know, they've done outreach, is just, is a, is a bunch of baloney, and it's an insult to all of us. I think the in-basin solar plant should be done to pursue it to competitive bidding, using building trades, fixed-price contracts, bonded contractors, so that we're not going to have the massive cost overruns that we've experienced in the past with DWP construction work crews. All we have to do is just look at what happened with the trunk lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Williams.
Thank you. Okay. Reading over the motions and such things, there's a question as to words. In one case, you say optimal candidate, and then in another case, it says candidate of highest quality. What's optimal? Because we've been working with DWP for a long time, and they like to select the definitions of their words very carefully. So, yes, I would highly recommend championing consumers' interests, not the IBEW's interests. I would also suggest that perhaps you should include "done." Maybe they could be the organizing element to bring. Meaningfully include neighborhood councils. How, what do you mean by meaningful? It takes us 60 days just to process a motion. So, uh, there's a lot of different problems there. It's a question as to, you have an organization right now that can do it, help you do it, but will it be meaningfully included? That's the question. Yep.
Keep going.
Keep going. Solar program, I call it Stealth B, because it's nothing more than Measure B, but rewrapped and trying to get in under the radar. So, and I'll finish in 41, 40 seconds.
You've got one minute and 58.
Yep.
Keep going, I love going.
It's late in the afternoon. 2:45. I like that number, 2:45. I would like to have it applied to the Board of Public Works, Balona and, Balona, Biona Creek TMDL for Bacteria Implementation Program, because it was approved on Monday, it has to be submitted next week, and it has a over $700 million capital price tag on it, but they don't know where the money's coming from. I can guarantee you, part of it will come from my pocket and everybody else's pocket. So please, consider a 2:45 on the Board of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And we'll talk about it on Friday in council, okay?
Again?
Okay, so that closes off item one, item two, public comment. And Mr. Cardness, I think he wants to make a comment before we adjourn, or we've given some input to the chief legislative analyst. I made a recommendation that Mr. Nahai be required to bill his time back to the Department of Water and Power. You take that $80,000 through the end of December, and he can bill us back on an hourly basis with a well-documented, specific, detailed timesheet, and I'm not sure, I couldn't remember the proper term, but it may have been accrual.
Accrual or cumulative.
Yeah, accounting. So that he demonstrates that he actually earned the money and that we're just not handing it, handing it away. So we're, and Mr. Coretz has added it in some language to state that, help me out, Mr. Coretz.
Essentially that we try to avoid this circumstance in the future, anticipate it and forbid this kind of a contract going forward.
The CLA will prepare a motion for us all to introduce on Friday, and with that-
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coretz. The, the suggestion you made was based on general manager or just contracts in general? Because we already have, we already have thresholds that, in which departments can go ahead and contract as long as it's under a certain threshold or less, or a certain timeline or less.
Well, this, this essentially would forbid this kind of a, a substitute for severance pay in, in that specific circumstance.
It's not dealing with the authority that they have to contract. It deals with the issue of producing work as opposed to just giving a severance package, because we are, you know, I believe that it is impermissible for us to use taxpayer money in that manner.
And it's been done times in the past historically, so.
Well, the, the fact of the matter is, your, your motion run item number one, correct?
Well, we're kind of done, but that's, if you want to add in-
Well, I, I wanted to, I wanted to see if anybody present who was on the city payroll of some fashion in this room knows how or what occurred and the reason why the abrupt departure of the general manager of the DWP. I don't think you're on payroll.
Yeah, I'm not on payroll. Soladad works for me, she just said.
Yeah, so, but the thing is, because the thing is, all I've, all I've heard is a lot of quotes in the press, but I haven't heard of any official statement from the Department of Water and Power. Mr. Freeman, since you're the interim, do you, do you recall or do you understand what the official announcement was, aside from the fact that David Freeman put in some kind of resignation, be it a letter, an email, or what have you?
David Nahai.
I'm sorry, David Nahai, well, David Nahai, but you're the, you're, Freeman is the interim, David Nahai left. I'm assuming that, that Mr. Nahai formalized some kind of communication to the Department of Water and Power that he was stepping down. What was the official statement on, of the department, once they've received that notice or that fact?
Well, I was deputy mayor at the time, and I was not party to that particular discussion.
Is there anybody here that's with DWP who was with them on the day that Mr. Nahai officially departed?
(laughing) You're, you know, you're something else.
Five more minutes, and I would have missed the meeting, so you would have got real lucky.
(laughing) I can't even.
So state, state, state your name for the record and-
Ramon Raj.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I'm almost done, Chad.
No, 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 that's, no, take your time.
Okay, Ramon Raj, yes.
Yes, I, yes, I was there at that time, and I had a discussion with Mr. Alpert, the commission, commission president.
The, Lee Alpert, the president of the DWP Commission?
Commission, right. And we discussed, and he informed me that Mr. Nahai had resigned from, from the department.
So you either assumed or were told that Mr. Nahai submitted some kind of communication directly to the board?
I don't, I don't know if it went directly to the board or to the mayor, but I was informed by the president of the board.
And your position at the department?
Chief Operating Officer.
So that was before that date, and currently you still have the same title?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you found out, as the chief operating officer-
Yes, sir.
-of the department, that Mr. Nahai had, or, or, excuse me, that you were told by the president of the Board of the Department of Water and Power that Mr. Nahai had, had stepped down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And did they communicate anything else, other than just, by the way, David's gone?
No, at that point, there was no other communication. It was a call to let me know that had happened, yes.
Okay, so a simple notification?
Yes.
All right. And since then, are you aware of any official statement on behalf of the department as to what took place, or, or it's just been simply articulated that he left?
That's all, that's all has been articulated, yes, sir.
So the whys or anything like that, or the causes are all a mystery? Because it, it is a personal decision. I mean, the department's not, when somebody resigns from, from a post that is, it's not protected. I mean, it, it's an at-will position, correct? The general managers serve at-will in the proprietary departments in every department in the city. So there's no legal requirement for the person to say why they stepped down, correct?
You're correct.
That's my, that's my interpretation. So that being the case, so all we know at this time is simplistically that he gave some type of notice of resignation, it was received by the department as an official resignation, and everybody moved on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If you like, we do have a statement from the mayor's office with regard to the resignation from Mr. Nahai. You could read that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, would anybody from the public like me to read this into the record?
Sure.
It's a letter from the mayor's office speaking to the same question that I asked. Okay. Mayor Verigosa's Statement on David Nahai's Resignation from the LEDWP. It says, "Mayor Antonio Verigosa issued the following statement today on the resignation of David Nahai from the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power," and it says, quote, "I would like to thank David Nahai for his four years of service at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, where he led the team responsible for increasing the city's renewable energy portfolio, comma, reducing water consumption to record levels, comma, and putting us on the path to-" the path to be coal-free by 2020." I don't see an end quote. "I wish him great success in his new endeavor as senior advisor to the Clinton Climate Initiative, where he will use his experience and leadership skills to advance their core mission of finding and developing workable solutions to climate change," end quote. And it's, at the bottom, it says, "Jared Irimas, Office of the Mayor Antonio Verigosa," which is press aide, and it's dated October 2nd, 2009. So, I guess that's the most official statement we have on record. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, now, let me just say this. I was the nice one. Now, these two are here.
Oh.
(laughing) Okay, so, I said my piece.
I'm done.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
As you, you know, Mr. Freeman likes to chit-chat. And Mr. Alarcon is here. I have to excuse myself, and I have asked the last councilperson standing to adjourn the meeting. And just for the record, we have completed the public comment. We have completed all the public comment on items one and two, and Mr. Coretz and I introduced a motion, which we will share the draft with you to probably Friday morning in council, so you can take a look at it. And please have at it. And Mr. Freeman has been more than gracious, even though we don't like the outcome. It's going to be, what is it, what's that movie? It's going to be a rocky ride. So, help yourself.
Yeah, I'm not actually looking for a rocky ride, but what, just to state for the record, my position, I don't have a problem with contracting with the previous general managers who are terminating their service, particularly when it's short of a full contract obligation. What I do have a problem with is clarity of what exactly they're going to be doing in terms of the service, and want to ensure that we don't get into a situation of a gift of public funds, where we cannot demonstrate that, in fact, the work performed is essential to the operation, as opposed to just work that allows somebody to get paid in what would appear to be a severance that was not authorized. So, this, from the information that I've gathered, there isn't a whole lot of description about what exactly the work that is going to be performed is going to be. And, you know, I get the sense that it's sort of like, if you have a question, you call Mr. Nahai, and then he gets paid. Well, wait a minute. No, he gets paid whether he gets a phone call or not. And I'm not sure, well, I'm sure that I am not one who supports payment for availability. This is not a medical physician who has to be paid for being available. This is a general manager who may have information that we can use, and I doubt, I don't know that, maybe under urgencies situations, but in most situations, are not going to be urgent, and there'll be opportunities to contact Mr. Nahai in a reasonable way, without having to pay him just for availability. So, those are the big concerns I have. I think it sends a horrible message to the public about how we're handling the ratepayer money. And so, I support the motions, as I understand them now, and am looking forward to looking at them closer on Friday. But frankly, David, we go back a long way, a long way. I know you go back a lot longer than I do, but what it can say is, this issue will go away if you just redo it in a way that we don't have to have all this debate. I really believe that you can solve this very quickly and make it go. This is not something we like to spend a lot of time on. We'd rather spend our time on other things in support of the department than things to challenge. And this, quite frankly, is too close in proximity to a previous action that the commission took, in this case, it was the commission that took it, to contract with, and provide benefits to an employee without consultation with the council, and eventually rescinded the action. I mean, if you keep going down this road, there will be negative ramifications. I would ask that you redo the contract, or ensure that the obligations that are incurred as a result of the contract are clearly expressed in terms of work-relatedness, in terms of need to the department, and in terms of how the work performed meets the objectives of the contract, and benefits the ratepayers and the DWP as a whole. That's all I want to say about it. I'm only hoping that this problem is solved before we have to get into it in any more depth. I don't think it's going to go away. That's my assessment. And, you know, I'm not going to be the first in line, but I'll be supporting those in front of me. And so, I strongly recommend the department reconsider, reconsider how this contract is implemented, and ensure that the interests of the public are served to their liking, which is a greater challenge than the way it's written now. So, anyway, those are my comments. I really don't have anything else to say.
Mr. Chair, for the purposes of the record, item two was to note and file a specific motion.
Correct.
Do you and Mr. Alarcon wish to add your guest votes to that, since you're out of the room?
Sure.
And then for item one?
To continue. That's a request from the Chair, if you're willing to support it.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we opened it up for public comment, and it's been closed, and all the items have been discussed that were agendized, and this committee is now adjourned.